Board meeting for Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. And just a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast live on B N C TV and livestreamed on YouTube. To find B N C TV on YouTube, go to YouTube dot com and search for Berniston Northfield Community Television. This meeting will be available for later viewing by following the link at the Town of Berniston dot org. You can also watch Channel 1075 on your Comcast dial in Berniston, at least on most days, right?
Yes.
Warrants, we'll start with the warrants tonight. I would entertain a motion for the payroll warrant in the amount of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So moved.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I entertain a motion for the vendor warrant in the amount of one hundred thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
So moved.
I'll second that. And just a note on that, that sixty-two thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty cents is for a new Vertrack sidewalk clearing equipment that's being paid for by a grant. So it's just a pass through to the town. That'll be being covered by a grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes, I'd entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes of August 20th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertain a motion for the special meeting minutes of August 25th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would entertain a motion for the special meeting minutes of August 26th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Calendar announcements. The Board of Health will hold their monthly meeting on Thursday, September 4th, at 3:30 at the Town Hall. The Green Committee will meet on Thursday, September 4th, at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall. The Recreation Commission will meet on Sunday, September 7th, at 11:30 AM at the Town Hall. The Berniston Historical Museum, second floor of the Senior Center, will be open on Sunday, September 7th, from 1 to 4 PM. The Finance Committee will meet on Monday, September 8th, at 5:30 PM at the Town Hall. Council on Aging will hold their monthly meeting on Tuesday, September 9th, at 9:30 AM at the Senior Center. The Efficiency and Regionalization Advisory Committee will meet on Tuesday, September 9th, at 5:30 PM at the Lyden Town Offices, 7 Brattleboro Road in Lyden. Chill with Willie. Wednesdays at Cushman Library will continue during the month of September at 4:00 PM. Join Willie, the Bright Spot Therapy Dog, and his owner Michelle at Cushman Library. An invitation for bids has been posted for the Berniston Country Estates On-Site Sewer Project on Thursday, September 11th, at 12:00 PM at Town Hall. The Family and Community Event Planning Committee will meet on Thursday, September 11th, at 5:00 PM at Town Hall to finalize plans for a family trivia night in October. The Town of Berniston Senior and Veteran Tax Work Off Program is designed to support eligible residents in reducing their real estate tax burden. Qualified seniors and veterans can earn up to seven hundred and fifty dollars in tax credit by working hours calculated at the current state minimum wage to various departments within the town. Participants will be matched with roles suited to their skills and experience. Availability is limited, so interested applicants are encouraged to apply promptly. Please contact Pam Parmakian, Senior Center Director, at pparmakian@townofberniston.org or call Pam at 413-648-5413 with your questions. And it's that time of year again, the Franklin County Hazardous Waste Collection Day is scheduled for Saturday, September 20th. Collection sites are at Greenfield Community College and the Orange Transfer Station. Latex paint is not accepted at this collection. You must pre-register for this event. Their registration deadline is Wednesday, September 10th, and details are available on the event calendar on the town website at www.townofberniston.org. Citizen concerns, seeing none that we don't already have on the agenda. Let's jump ahead, we do have a public tree hearing coming up with the tree ward. He's not here yet, so let's move on to the Finance Committee and Conservation Commission. We wanted to come, I know you reached out, Bill, to Jane about a possible conservation agent. I know you folks had a conversation, I don't know if you want to allude to it a little bit, Jane, or Bill? I know two of you have had some sidebars on it, perhaps?
Um, well, Bill asked where the funding was going to come from, and I had to tell him that the Conservation Commission did not ask for a budget for that. So that's kind of where it stands. My, my history, my historical button up here says that there was a separate account that they got charged to. I can't find that account in the current accounts, and I haven't had the opportunity to go back in history and find it. But I, my, my collection is that when that position was approved, it was going to be paid for by the fees that people were charged for the services that they needed to go through the Conservation Commission for.
So the reason for this discussion is our current conservation agent, Savannah Kitchen, moved along.
Right.
Which allowed for a vacancy.
Right.
Which Bill's trying to fill.
Right.
So, I know, what are, what are your thoughts on it that you?
Well, so Jane's right, the, the, um, the qualification that I would add to it is that, and I think some of these emails kind of bear that out. On the second page, there's a conversation with one of our previous members, Lou, right before we hired Savannah. We hired our, our first agent in, uh, 2022, I believe. Uh, I don't have that number for you, but we had an agent before Savannah. Um, it was the first one that we had. As with Jane, the memory button isn't firing completely, but my memory of that, as I explained to Karen and Jane, was that Lou came to us with an opportunity to hire somebody. We had, we had talked about it because, uh, the chair previous to me, Bill Mies, if you remember Bill, um, he left for a variety of reasons, and one of them was because, um, as Berniston grows, the Conservation Commission duties expand, and Bill was, Bill did a fantastic job, but he was overwhelmed by the duties that, uh, the chair had, which are all the duties that the conservation agent takes on. Uh, many towns do this without an agent, uh, smaller towns like Berniston, but it was getting to the point with the solar expansion in town and other projects, uh, it, it did tip Bill over the edge. And so it was about that time that we, uh, I don't remember exactly how the events transpired, but, um, we said, let's, let's get a, a person in to do this who is, uh, an expert in the Wetlands Protection Act but can handle the administrative duties. And so we hired, um, Cassie Trager, who moved on and is a full-time conservation, forty hours a week for North Hampton now. But, uh, at that time, Lou said, I've got a budget for that. So we never, the Conservation Commission never submitted a request for, to pay her. And then when we, when she left, and eventually we hired Savannah, we never submitted a budget for that either. It just happened, if you will. You know, there was somewhere, some, some, how the, uh, these people were getting paid. So when Savannah left, as, as we've now said, that, uh, um, there's, there's a lot of confusion as to where that money was coming from, so we do, we need to find how to, how to take care of that.
My recollection of the initial intent, I don't know what it morphed into in the end, was exactly what Jane said. Through the fees, they wouldn't be working a set schedule or a set number of hours a week. It would be based on the need of the Conservation Commission because of projects that were coming into them. Coming along with those projects is a fee. That fee was to be used to pay the conservation agent for the work for project X, Y, or Z.
Yeah.
Maybe later on, it did morph into more than that, but the original intent, because none of us can recollect there ever being a budget for any staff for you.
Yeah.
That came from the fees to fully fund that person. And it was, again, on an as-needed basis originally when Bill Mies left.
Yeah, that part I don't remember. I, I thought that we did hire, I remember Lou, uh, put a, put a cap on the hours at five hours a week, and, and initially, that was no problem. There were periods of time that we, that was maxed out when there was lots of work, obviously. Um, the, uh, one thing I should, I should say about the fees that come in, in regards to, uh, projects that happen in Berniston, and fees come in related to them, there's, we have, as, you know, it's, there's a, uh, in this packet that Karen put together, I believe, um, there's some, uh, budgeting items that have been highlighted, and some of the items that have been highlighted are, um, fees that come into the town to pay environmental monitors. That would be on this very last page under Group Two, Segment Two.
I guess, uh, this is not highlighted.
Pardon me?
This isn't highlighted.
Oh, well, it's highlighted in my packet, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Um, so it would be the second section down, under, uh, Group Two's.
Once I stopped looking for highlighting.
Um, it's under conservation. Nevertheless, the point I was going to make is that we have fees that come in to pay environmental monitors that are required of the applicant, the person who, uh, has an order of conditions, the person building the solar field, and, you know, we'll use that as examples. Uh, we require them in the order of conditions to hire a monitor. Uh, so there's a significant amount of money that comes in to pay that monitor. We also have fees that come in when an order of conditions is, uh, submitted by an applicant. A, a portion of those fees go to the town, a portion go to the state. That may be where Lou originally said, uh, let's, you know, we've got that money in there, uh, let's take some from there.
That's exactly it.
But you see, there's never been a turnover of those fees to the town. I can't find where that, the, like, the, the fee gets paid to the, I don't know where...
Do people bring a fee into you?
Not to us personally, the, the order of conditions goes into the town and the, and to DEP at the same time, or, excuse me, the notice of intent. And, um, so at that point, the applicant is required to pay a fee, and...
Online, through the website?
And so, logistically, I don't know how that happens, to be honest with you.
And in my reading of that regulation, it said normally, the state's portion is paid online, and they bring you a check.
Yeah, we, we never get any money.
Right. That's my point.
And we never get any money.
And we don't get, there's no money coming.
Wow.
Yeah.
So what, people who are doing this honestly are, they, they read the instructions, they're just ignoring that? I don't know.
Or they're sending it to the state?
When you and I read through it that day, right?
You see, yeah, it says fifty percent of the fees goes to the state and fifty percent to the town, but there's never been turnovers from the agent, conservation agent, of any fees whatsoever. One time, there was a check for two hundred and fifty dollars. Very recently, after Savannah left, I got a check from somebody.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Right.
And that didn't go into the right account.
And that went into, there's no, so there's no, and there's no account set up to put fees for the Conservation Commission. There's no account set up for that. So does the, does the, does the state cut the town a check and get, at one, once, I don't know?
No, that's not a check.
No, I'm asking a question, Jane, to Bill, not to you, I'm talking to Bill. But does, is, does a check get generated from the state to the town?
Uh, that, I don't know. I don't, I had, so, and I apologize, I'm not trying to make excuses here, but the, uh, my tenure with the Conservation Commission went from an individual sitting on the Conservation Commission until, um, I became Chair about three years ago. So, you know, as a member of the Conservation Commission, you're kind of oblivious to all this stuff going on. And until this has happened, uh, I, you know, the more I've learned about the regulations, oh yeah, the town gets this. Well, uh, I just assumed that the applicants would follow the directions, cut a check to the town, cut a check to the state.
Yeah. And we're all learning here, so we're all, don't feel bad.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to.
Yeah, and my research, yeah, we haven't received any funds, is all. There's been no turnover of fun, of fees to the town.
Do you have a good contact with the DEP that you deal with?
Sure.
Can you just ask them that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Question? Could you probably have easier access than we do to that person?
Yeah, um, absolutely.
You could read their regulation two ways. One, they paid the whole fee to the state, and the state kicked this money back.
That's what I was thinking.
Then you read it a little farther, and it sounded to me like you sent half the fee minus twenty-five dollars to the state, and the other half, the fee plus the twenty-five dollars was given to the town.
And that check could come into Mona, it could come into Susan, we don't even know who's getting it.
How do you get notified of somebody applying for an NOI?
Well, it depends on how they apply. They do it in writing, it literally ends up in our mailbox.
Okay.
Um, and because we, so we're growing, but we're still a small town, so these kinds of things might happen, you know, uh, in my tenure, we might get a, you know, in that, so I've probably been on the Conservation Commission going on fourteen, fifteen years. In the first few years, well, we never, I never saw a notice of intent until this solar field behind the pizza shop went in. So, you know, that, and that was, you know, going on, say, eight years into my tenure or so, one notice of intent in eight years. Uh, but then, now it's, you know, it's, they're coming more often.
Right.
Um, and, um, so I, I'm not answering your question, but, uh, you know, the, the...
So normally, you'll see it in your mailbox.
Yeah, it's, yes, I'm sorry.
Somebody physically brings it to the town.
In the mailbox, or if it goes to the state electronically, like the, the big companies that do these solar fields, all of that, uh, gets transmitted to us, to the chair or the conservation agent electronically, uh, from DEP people. Yeah.
So maybe we should just ask them that question, that, that's, that's what we're missing, is that piece of the fee that would pay this person.
I will do that first thing tomorrow.
Because I think that's what the intent Lou was running at, that previous year time, that's what we were believing.
Why, why would I want a five one in ten?
If there was going to be disturbance within a resource area, a wetland, a riverfront area, say, I'm going to, I'm going to alter that, as the Act says, fill, alter, or dredge a wetland resource.
And some of the fees, Jane, Karen and I were looking at, were quite steep, I mean, multiple thousands of dollars for what looked to be fairly simple NOIs.
Yeah, the NOIs for these solar projects would have been significant.
Must be huge, right?
Yeah.
And that's where you got, like, the SWCA's of the world involved to oversight.
To do the monitoring.
Because they're big projects. Yeah, you have, we could never monitor them ourselves.
No. So maybe that's where we start, I mean, because right now, we don't have money to pay this person, right? Am I speaking not out of turn?
Right.
Even that small amount of money.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's not small.
And some of the, the questions of it too are, when you were talking conservation agent type work, we understand the dollar figure you're looking for to pay that person. I'm confused, because we don't pay administrative people that dollar figure to do your minutes at a meeting. So significantly, I'm going to call it a clerk makes.
Yeah, it's a good question, and, uh, when I first came to the Conservation Commission, we had a couple of individuals that, uh, served those roles, took, took minutes, did, did correspondence, that kind of thing. They had no expertise in the Wetlands Protection Act. Uh, the agent, uh, which many towns have, and some towns will, uh, and municipalities will have an agent, well, there'll, there'll be an agent that will serve multiple towns, which, you know, is an option that, uh, I've thought about. But, uh, the, the agents have an expertise in the Wetlands Protection Act. The, um, they just, you know, I, frankly, the two folks that we had, uh, knew more about the goings-on of the, of the Wetlands Protection Act and the paperwork and regulations more than I, I did, frankly, because of their, their education, their, and their, uh, work experience. Yeah, and doing that kind of work all the time.
So I think, right this minute, before we can move forward, this is just Brian speaking, if we can find out if people pay the state, if the state's been sending us checks and we're just, they're showing up and nobody knows where to post them to, so it's not funding that account that would normally pay that person? And if that's the case, there's our source of funding for it. I mean, those fees that do come in, because like you say, some of those bigger solar projects, there must have been a significant fee attached to that.
Yeah.
Just for your NOIs.
Yeah.
Never mind your conditions that go on it for continued monitoring.
Yeah.
And those probably were ten thousand dollars, and we looked at some of the simple ones that were between two and four thousand dollars just for putting a house in, in that riverfront area. It was upwards of four thousand dollars to apply for an NOI. Two thousand of that would have come to the town. That's a pretty good chunk of money, when you're looking to pay somebody twenty-five or twenty-six dollars an hour to go toward that.
Well, and some towns have an agent that they only bring on board when they need an agent, and they have a clerk.
They call it a per diem.
And they have a clerk that does the clerical work. And their town, some of those towns are bigger than we are that do it that way. And I'm wondering why we haven't thought about that approach.
I think because we had it easy before, when Lou had it figured out and fees were coming in somehow, something going to that account, it wasn't a big deal because the money was there to pay that person.
Well, there was a lot of stuff going on that, that brought that account up.
Right.
Into the six acres.
Probably why, and I do know, talking to Brian Herview, there's that Berniston Lyden, Lyden Regionalization Committee where they're looking at overlaps.
Yeah.
I know that's one of the things they're looking at.
Yeah.
Is a con, a shared conservation agent for, to get more hours to make it easier to hire somebody.
Right. Karen, you, I think you told me, does Lyden have an agent?
They do not.
They do not, yeah. Okay, but there's, so there's a great opportunity for us.
And they definitely have a need from time to time, like we used to, because like you say, this isn't your full-time job, right?
I, I, so, I, since Savannah left, we've dealt with, uh, an, an NOI for the, uh, shuffleboard court and a couple of requests for determination of applicability and, you know, I, I personally have spent, uh, you know, twenty hours this week doing that kind of stuff. And that's mainly because I'm just not used to doing it. You know, somebody who is tuned into that, knows the regulations, knows how the paperwork works, five hours a week would be plenty. Um, I actually, actually asked Savannah, uh, here recently, a day or two ago, you know, truly, is that enough time? She said, absolutely, so, for this town.
Would she ever consider on a per diem basis?
I, I kind of brought that up, but she's working effectively full-time now, and she, it was amazing to me, she lived an hour and a half away.
Right.
And would come here for meetings and site visits, and it's remarkable.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, yeah.
Thoughts? Moving forward?
I want to hear where the money is.
Yeah.
Because that makes it a whole lot easier. Without the money, not this year, we need to wait till the next budget cycle to get, to find that money to hire somebody.
Well, the, the only option.
Sorry?
Is if we have to have a special town meeting, and we choose to put it on the special town.
We could do that too.
Then we could do that.
Yeah. That's a fair comment.
Which is a possibility, for sure.
Okay.
And, and it would be adding not to this year's budget, it would be doubling up on next year's budget, whatever we vote to raise in appropriate at this point, is, would be going into the, um, twenty-seven budget.
And tax rate.
And tax rate. And decrease our ability to spend it on something else without a two and a half over.
I mean, unless the DEP comes back and says, yeah, we just sent the town of Berniston eight thousand dollars last quarter.
Yeah.
And then we, they can give us some info, and we can figure out where it went.
Yeah.
Well, and if, I guess too, there'd be a revolving account, probably should be set up for something like this, right?
No, I don't know that...
Let's find the money first.
No, I understand that, but you see, my point is, we're, we're... Where was it? Just a second, my, where, where was the fund before? You know, if this was all set up by Lou before, where is that fund?
That we've changed accounting systems and services since then too, maybe it got dropped mistakenly.
And that kind of money usually goes into a special fund, which does revolve, but is not what we mean when we say a revolving fund.
Okay. So the fees would go in and the, it would go in in the same account the payroll gets paid, right? That's...
That would be the easy part, if they'd been sending checks and it's been getting booked somewhere else, the accountant can pull that back out and put it where it's supposed to be, maybe.
I would think it's out there somewhere though.
For this year, but remember, this year it started July 1st.
So that, maybe make it easier to bring this money in quicker, if we can find that trail.
Yeah, yeah.
If people aren't bringing a physical check to you guys when, when that application comes in.
You know, one thing I could do, so, in, it's, again, not trying to make excuses, but you, you know, uh, I took over the chair position at the time we had an agent handling the administrative things, and we have a lot of files over here from years gone by before we had an agent and before I was a chair. I can, I can take a, a peek there, because, you know, maybe there's some records of how that was handled.
Okay. You know, I could... Or we could talk to Lou.
Pardon me?
Or we could talk to Lou, and he would tell us where the...
Well, that's a, you're shaking your head, no.
No, I just don't know, I mean, I guess we could talk to Lou.
Is that, is that appropriate? I, I don't know.
I don't think, I, I mean, we can talk about it, it's fine.
I mean, Susan might have a little input too, rather.
It looks like there's an account that says Wetlands Protection Revolve in Unrestricted Cash with ninety-one hundred and...
Right, that's what I always thought it was, but I guess it's for beaver trapping instead.
Well, that's different.
Yeah, they were very similar names, Brad.
Unfortunately.
Yes, and...
Probably got lost on, like you said.
And the...
And maybe it's been, some of it's been getting shuffled into that account.
Right.
Thinking, like, because I thought the same thought, and then Jane straightened me out.
I know, and, and I, I had it, but it was like one very small word, different.
And maybe it's that simple, because that seems like a lot of money.
Right.
For that account.
We could have killed it because we thought it was the same, as, in, during the conversion.
But I was told it was for beavers, not, because I thought it was for that paying the agent, but it was told it was for beavers. So I don't know where that account is, if there was one set up by Lou, it's not, I went back two years, and there's no...
Well, you'd have all the records, previous account.
Right.
She could just look real quick at that, probably, and probably jump right out at her.
Okay.
I, uh, I don't want to be negative, but, um, one, you know, if, for some reason we, uh, things, things get, um, busy, real busy, with the Conservation Commission, um, it could get tough to handle everything, you know, if we, you know, I had, I heard rumors that there were, that there was talk of more solar expansion in the town, and that's all they were, were rumors.
We do know one of those backed out.
Um, there, I do know, I do know, in fact, I've been, had a conversation in the last week with an individual who wants to add on to this one, totally separate company, totally separate development. Um, I don't know if that's the one you're speaking of.
No, different one.
So...
Would you have any way to, with people in the similar functions as yourself, that would have an agent that doesn't work full-time for them, that we could reach out to and say, would you do some per diem work for us, to get us, to take the pressure off of you?
Well, my, you know, my, my wife works for the Town of Berniston, or at least she will for a short period of time before she retires here, but, um, they, did I say Berniston? But they, did I say Berniston? I'm sorry, Deerfield, thank you, Jane.
They were looking.
Yeah. Who is that?
Yeah, yeah.
And they just hired an agent for about the same, she thinks about the same amount of hours, but for more money. But it's a first contact.
And maybe, you know, because we have to make something like that work, because it's not fair to you to work thirty hours a week as a chair of the Conservation Commission to make these things work.
Well, I may be retired, but I have a life.
That wasn't your intent. And we get that, believe me. This is a tough year right now with the biggest thing is the medical insurance that got thrown at us first.
So I've heard, so I've heard.
That's a ninety thousand dollar hitter that wasn't in our budget.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a big deal.
All right, so you get two minutes before we kick into the other meeting.
Yeah.
I have, I don't, don't, don't run away. I have a story to tell.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
It's gonna take lessons who manage.
Absolutely. Last week at the ZBA meeting, there was a hearing on one Brattleboro Road, they're putting up a building there. And the topic of conversation was a side conversation as we were walking out, was about cutting down trees on town property. And evidently, word went out from the Conservation Commission that it was okay for them to do that. And it's not the way it works. We have a town bylaw, I have it in front of me here, that says, there's a prescribed procedure that has to go through. And not once in this whole bylaw does it say anything about the Conservation Commission being the approved agent for that. The reason that bylaw exists is because it had nothing to do with the Conservation Commission. Somebody else in Town Hall told them, but told a brand-new citizen of the town as they're building their house, that it was okay to cut down trees. And.
In the right of way.
They would, they overstepped their bounds and cut down trees they shouldn't have. So we went through all the effort, we got it all approved. In fact, it's approved by the Attorney General of Concombre, Massachusetts, this bylaw. It says that the tree warden is supposed to be the funneling process to get it approved and to have a hearing, which we're gonna have a hearing coming up on a different issue. But this whole thing, somebody stepped out of line. And I don't want to point fingers because I don't know it to be in fact true that it was somebody from the Conservation Commission. I just have heard from two different sources in town, two citizens, not connected, that said that Bobby Dean was authorized to do that by somebody on the Concom. So if you could, if I could ask.
Jane, may I borrow your pen?
At your next meeting to just remind them of the existence of the bylaw, and if you want a copy of it, you can have it.
Yeah, I, I have a fairly strong recollection of that meeting where we reviewed the request for determination of applicability for that, the work that they're gonna do there. Because they do, they are doing work inside a resource area. And, and I do remember the conversation about those trees. But I don't remember anybody saying, ah, you can just cut those. But I'm making a note here.
Go ahead.
To look at the minutes.
Yeah, please.
And to talk at, talk to the members of the commission.
Just so going forward, we don't trip ourselves.
Yeah, oh, I'm, I'm, you don't even, I, I'm fully aware of how the tree warden functions in the town.
Okay, good.
And that's why it's, it's a little disturbing if somebody might've implied that.
It could be that the landowner said, went to your hearing, because you got the blessing.
Landowners weren't here.
Yep, and they were here at the ZBA meeting as well. They, now they're out of town unfortunately, but the whole, the whole process is, it's just, we need to nail this down so that we have a proper approval process and we get.
Yeah, understand.
The whole process.
Fully understand.
Great.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you for coming, Billy.
Appreciate it.
You'll be in touch with what you find out with the fees? You'll let me know, you'll be in touch with what you find out about the fees?
Yes, I'm gonna do that first thing in the morning.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Will do, all right.
All right.
Thanks.
Have a good one. Okay, next up, Bradley, you can come forward if you'd like. We have a public tree hearing with the tree warden. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter eighty-seven, we'll call a public tree hearing to order at six thirty-three, thirty-four PM. And I'm gonna turn it over to you, Brad. If that's okay.
Yeah.
I know it was duly advertised in the newspaper.
Yeah, I gotta read my little spiel.
Yeah. Usually have a little something, right?
In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter eighty-seven, the tree warden will conduct a public hearing on September third, twenty-twenty-five, at six-thirty at the Town Hall, Thirty-Eight Church Street, Berniston, Mass, to consider the removal of the following public trees. Marked trees along West Mountain, Fox Hill, Eden Trail and Eden Trail Branch. This is part of an Eversource project to increase clearance and reliability around the power lines. Any objections to their removal must be submitted in writing to the tree warden prior to or during the hearing. I didn't get anything.
There's a surprise.
Yeah. Karen, did you hear anything?
No.
No, yeah, I didn't really expect it would, but.
Ballpark, how many trees are you looking at?
I don't know. I haven't actually counted.
Okay.
I'm not sure. And the reason for that is there's a mixture of public and private trees.
Okay.
So the Northern Tree Service is the contractor. They were, you've seen them along.
Seen them going along.
So they've already started for maybe a month, I'm guessing.
Yep.
And so they're working, I think they're on Eden Trail now, they started on West Mountain.
Yep.
But they've been working mostly on the private trees, so.
Till this is done.
Till this is done. They've had to wait.
So you just need a vote from us, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So entertain a motion to approve the removal of marked trees along West Mountain Road, Fox Hill Road, Eden Trail and Eden Trail Branch roads in support of the Eversource project to increase clearance and reliability around the power lines. So moved, and I will second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, enter, do you have anything else before I close that hearing?
If anyone is interested in the spring, we'll be trying to do some more tree plantings around the center of town.
Okay.
That's kind of a positive.
Yep.
Not that this was a negative, but trying to do the opposite.
Yep.
Cut them down and then we plant them.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn the public tree hearing.
So moved.
Now, second that, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's at six thirty-six.
That's like a record.
So is Verizon coming to do something else too? Didn't I hear something about Verizon?
They're in town.
Are they doing some tree clearing too somewhere or going to for a project?
Planting?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I've heard rumors of different things, but nothing has come forward officially.
Somehow I talked to you about it once, I think, or you had a correspondence.
Yeah, Brian mentioned it too. I'm not really, Brian Minor, yeah, I'm not really sure what the deal is.
Okay.
A few people have mentioned that though.
I don't know, I keep hearing that scuttlebutt, never seen anything official.
Right.
Or maybe they're behind the eight ball like.
I think they're trying to do a big fiber project and I'm not really sure how it fits into new tree work, but I imagine that they'll come forward.
I know they've been running fiber here and there, that's what they were doing past my house.
Yeah, so when the time comes, hopefully they ask.
Yeah.
So after the previous discussion with the Concom, when Verizon says they need Northern Tree to come, did they contract Northern Tree? So it's not, doesn't go through the books of the town, the finances of the town? Did they pay them to come and cut those trees down?
I don't understand the question.
Somebody has to pay Northern Tree.
Yeah.
Is that Verizon or is that the town of Berniston after being paid by Verizon?
I don't think we've ever done a project where Verizon does tree work.
I don't remember ever hearing them doing it.
Eversource is contracting Verizon, has nothing.
Did I say Eversource? Did I say?
No, no.
I apologize.
You meant Eversource.
Typically work with an Eversource rep regularly. Does Verizon have a similar person?
No.
I've never heard of them.
If they do, they haven't had a project in town, so I haven't dealt with it.
So go back to what I asked, the question only put Eversource instead of Verizon. When Eversource comes to the town and says, we want to cut down these trees, you arrange for Northeastern Tree or Northeast Tree to come in and cut them down? You pay out of your budget and then Eversource pays us back or how does the, how does the finances work?
Finances all run through Eversource, they hire.
You're just.
I work with whatever utility arborist, whether it's an Eversource arborist or a contracted through Eversource Northern Tree Service arborist. I work with them to pick the trees that they can cut or can't cut and then have these hearings.
I know this is a service to the town, the townspeople in particular, to have Eversource come and do this. But your budget, your time is paid for by the citizens of Berniston.
Right.
Does Eversource pay?
No.
You?
That comes out of the town.
So.
But we're getting all.
We're on the hook for that.
Ridiculous amount of free tree work as a result of this, so it.
But if they didn't do it, the trees would continue to grow and.
And fall.
And fall.
Yeah.
On the lines and disrupt the services of the towns.
Yeah.
So there is some benefit.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. We just had some storm damage, for example, on Huckle Hill. Two different occurrences actually in the last week. In both cases, I would've had to either call a tree company, rent a lift, they were all well above fifty feet. And I called the person at Eversource and they're gonna come take care of them.
Okay.
No cost to us, cost me a phone call. So the relationship balance works.
All right.
Out of our, well in our favor.
Hey, sure. As a concerned citizen, taxpayer.
Yeah, no, it's good to ask, yeah.
Okay.
That is how it works though, yeah, they pay for it.
Okeydoke.
Hopefully it stays that way.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Bradley.
Thanks for doing this.
You got it. Okay, next up on our new business, Mass DEP Water Management Act mitigation update. Jen DeRusso, from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, from Mass DEP, Water Management Act, WMA program, has reached out to the town regarding the Berniston Fire and Water District's WMA permit. The issue at hand is the need for the Berniston Fire and Water District to secure mitigation credits to support increased water withdrawals. And I'm gonna stop it there, Ken, just to say I'd like to pass over this.
I agree.
We need to get more information from Town Council.
Yep.
This is entering one of the town bylaws to do this, what exactly that means, we need to understand better.
It may raise to the level that have it on a town meeting.
Yes.
So, and we're not sure where.
Right.
We, we may not have that authority to do it at this like board level.
So I'm not gonna read through all of this verbiage until we get those answers.
Makes sense, absolutely.
Pass over that for tonight, Karen.
Okay.
Next up, we have surplus equipment. Highway Superintendent Brian Minor submitted the following equipment for the surplus designation. He also gave me a phone call to help explain it, if what's written here doesn't make enough sense. So I'm gonna read all three of them and then we'll have a motion. They have a two thousand and two stone roller, currently inoperable. The manufacturer ceased operations nineteen years ago. Replacement parts are no longer available. They're recommending it for disposal as scrap.
Is that the thing that flattens the tar of the roads?
Yeah, but it's made specifically for stone, it has a different roller on it. The rock top ones are smoother and not as rugged as the one for stone. It's a bigger plate on the roller, I think, is what makes sense, right?
So it's really for the dirt roads?
Yeah, and it's, hasn't, Brian hasn't run it in a few years because he can't get parts, he just wants to get it out of the way. The next one on the list is a two thousand and three Ford Explorer, the one the highway super used to run around in. It's inoperable. We did buy a new, new used truck a couple of years back. Repair costs exceed the vehicle's value. He's recommending that one, if we put it on a uni-bid, we might get five or six hundred bucks because somebody might want it for parts. As opposed to, he said, he doesn't believe anybody will fix it, but it would go on as parts. I don't know how that bid works. He's never done it, Karen.
I've done it, I'll do it.
See if it works. If it doesn't work and the value costs us money to do it that way, we'll just scrap it. But he thinks he might make a couple hundred bucks on that.
That's when we do the police car?
Yeah.
He's just gonna send me photos and I'll post it. I posted things on the mini-bid before, Jennifer's chairs from the, remember, from the senior center, so.
Yes, I remember.
I know what, how to post it, it's free, it doesn't cost you to post it.
We can get two hundred dollars from one of the charities.
Yeah, right.
You'll see what you can get for it, you never know.
You never know.
And the next one is the, go ahead.
And that, is that how we do the police cars?
Yes, yeah, cheap palm air typically gets pretty good cash for those.
I know.
Yeah, he's been, I mean, he strips them and he says the movie companies use them, they buy them and they use them in movies.
Yeah, really. He does it himself though, he doesn't go through the town to do that.
No, but, but it's the same site.
I have no idea.
I believe it is that mini-bid. The next one up for surplus equipment is the two thousand and one Hustler Hillside Mower Sidewalk Plow. It's currently inoperable. Repair costs are not economically feasible. Replacement mower will be acquired through upcoming grant funding, which is the one that we paid for tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
He's recommending that for surplus as well, they'll drain all the fluids out of it and all of the ones, except for the Ford Explorer, they'll just put it in the scraps deal at the transfer station and we'll get scrap price for it. So entertain a motion to authorize set items for surplus designation as stated. So moved, and I'll second that. Anybody have any other questions about any of that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old business, newsletter service agreement clarification. Karen, can I just toss that one to you for the?
Sure. So we had the meeting on the twentieth and you authorized, you approved the service agreement with LPI to join the community's newsletter program. Following clarification from LPI, the program does not cover mailing costs to residents' homes. So as a result, I was thinking, I was gonna recommend that maybe we fund a one-time mail-out, the very first edition, just one time. And we can have inside the newsletter ways that our residents can obtain the newsletter moving forward. Hard copies at Town Hall, the senior center, and oh, by the way, they can sign up for email distribution as well. So I apologize for that oversight, but they do not pay for.
What does a one-time cost?
Well, we'll have to figure that out, but probably depending on the way, you know, I got to see, it would be, I mean, postcards cost about six hundred bucks for a ballpark. But I gotta, I'd have to, I'd have to assess that, what the amount is.
You're gonna mail the first newsletter or?
It's the very first newsletter, the very first edition of the newsletter, one time, the one that.
And inside it'll explain, it's not gonna come every quarter or every month, whatever it is.
It'll be one of the articles in the.
Yeah, in the newsletter.
And if they sign up for the email.
Fill out the form or whatever.
It'll automatically get emailed to them.
Yep.
Adams, I would recommend checking with Adams or bulk mail-in.
Didn't they already business?
Yeah, that's what we always, we, no, Adams, we use, we use, we're using Adams with efficiency and utilization postcards and Board of Health postcard, I used Adams.
And for the accounting, we can use that fund money to pay for that first mailing, depending on the price, right?
Yeah, I'll come back to you on the price, but I don't have it right now.
We do have a fair amount of money in there that carried for a couple of years.
There's twenty-six hundred in the town, yeah.
Twenty-six hundred in the newsletter?
Yep.
Yeah, we talked about it during.
According to Elizabeth's most recent expense report, that's what I saw.
We have time to figure it out.
Yep.
We can approve or disapprove of that process and then once we know the figure, we can approve the dollar figure.
Okay.
So we know we have enough money.
I'd be more comfortable waiting until.
We can find donations for the mail-out too, that was just, that was a recommendation, but I have a, I have a donation, someone in mind that would pay for the mail-out too, but.
Really?
But it's just really, it's town business, so.
So let's put that off and we'll, once we know the exact figure, what it would cost to do it.
We know we got the money, we just, I just don't want to give a blank check without some sense of whether it's a thousand bucks or two thousand or whatever.
All right, no problem. All right, no problem.
Okay, other business on the time of posting, Senior Center Handicap Ramp today. The handicap ramp serves as a vital entryway for many of our senior residents. And visitors with mobility challenges is currently in need of repair. The ramp condition poses safety concerns, may limit access for those who rely on it most. Today, the highway crew spent a good chunk of the day putting some temporary repairs to it, so it's still usable. Um, some of the mitigation going into play, and you know the story better than I do, so I'll let you say it.
Okay, um, actually, Karen and I, the, uh, ramp is, it's for three, four years now, has been on our radar uh, to be repaired. Takes a lot of salt, uh, just to get the people safely into the, uh, senior center during inclement weather, particularly ice and rain, snow conditions. They dump salt on that ramp, and it's rotted the base of it out, completely rotted. There are, there's some, uh, steel clamps that hold the four-by-four posts, and they've just, they've disappeared. So there's a gap between the cement, uh, foundation posts and the, uh, superstructure above that where the people actually walk. They were working on it yesterday, and, uh, I told them to get out from underneath there, because it just, it was like it was gonna fall down. It was awful, but today they've repaired it, they've shored it up, so at least now it's safe, short-term safe. It's not a, by any means a permanent solution. We're exploring a permanent solution, um, and we've asked, uh, Scott DeGeorge to, uh, assist us in that process to frame what it's gonna cost, uh, frame should be, wrong choice of words, to find out for us what it's gonna cost. Permitting, engineering, uh, the structure itself, um, and there are different solutions in place, whether we do it out of wood or we do it out of metal or some other solution. All of that, Scott's gonna explore for us and come back to us. That's the long-term fix, the short-term fix, they did today, um, so people that go to the senior center feel comfortable that it's, they can use it. But it's gonna go through another winter at least, uh, until we get it, uh, we have the money in the budget. We don't have the money in the budget this year, so it's something we'd have to.
Well, unless they, unless the amount is small enough, they can get it off their repair budget.
We're talking five figures.
I said eleven.
Well, and again, if it's over ten thousand dollars, we have to go through the procurement process.
Yes, there'll be three bids, that kinda thing.
Right, I just wanna make that clear.
And it is a historic building, so we, all of those things have to come into play, whether we can, what we can do to, is a solution long-term. Short-term, we've, we backed off the, the urgency. Um, I just was not comfortable at all in letting anybody go up there the way it was, but they made some quick fixes to it and from the bottom up are holding the thing up, so it's, it's safe again, but that's only temporary.
Okay, so that's where we are. Perfect, thank you. Next up, we have a Burn, Berniston Elementary School use application. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the Berniston Elementary School use application for the Berniston Rec Fall Soccer on Wednesdays and Fridays from three fifteen to five P.M. outside on the fields at Berniston Elementary School. Uh, the principal, Sarah Burstein, did sign off on it.
And it is from, um, the, starting today, I'm sorry, it came in late, yeah.
September third through October seventeenth.
Correct.
So, so moved, and I'll second that, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Town administrators report.
All right, so, um, the Berniston Senior Center received official notification of the filing grant renewals for, for one year from, all three grants are from October first, twenty-twenty-five to thirty September, um, twenty-twenty-six. They go by federal fiscal year, that's what that is. So the Caregiver Support Group Program has been renewed under the Fund Triple E, or I, Triple I E. The grant award will be in the amount of four thousand dollars.
Nice.
The YMCA Enhanced Fitness has been renewed, um, in the amount of six thousand dollars. And the BSC Evening Cafe has been renewed under the Church Street Home Fund, um, in the amount of two thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. So that was.
That's huge.
We were worried about those not getting.
Yes.
Right, so.
That takes some pressure off the budget, yeah, cause we're gonna need that money for the health insurance.
So that has been, they have been renewed or reawarded.
Hopefully, that's a sign of things to come for the senior center with their grant program.
Didn't they also get word that while there was no positive answer yet, they should apply for the, um, what's the name of it?
Sig Grant?
Sig Grant, thank you.
And they did, I think she did apply for that, but I, yes.
I mean, that's already done, that wasn't something new, I just wanted people to know that.
Yep.
No guarantees, but send in your application.
Knock on wood.
Well, that, I mean, that's an improvement, because they were told, don't apply for it.
Yeah, they said you didn't have a prayer to get it again this year. Yes, that's correct.
And then just breaking news, um, John Briggs, the, from the Pioneer Valley Mosquito District called the town today. He did, personally called us.
Yeah.
He, first of all, he told me he lost his summer help, so he's basically making the phone calls himself, but, um, anyway.
This is the fellow that came?
Yes, he came, yep, and, um, Jane had mentioned early before the meeting about the positive test results on Shaw Road, and he wanted to let us know that. You know, I was under the impression it was West Nile virus, I hope I'm not, I'm not under.
Well, you probably are.
Okay, yeah, it was West Nile vi, that's what, she had said Triple E, so, but it's. And, um, he said, we can't tell you where the, where the testing thing is on Shaw Road, I forget what it's called, but, but he said to, you know.
They weren't in your backyard yard?
No, and there, you know, further down from me, there's another area.
A wetland, yeah.
It's a wetland that.
Right.
That crosses the, the road. In fact, when I used to walk my other dog, I would, that's where I would turn around, cause it's mosquito heaven.
Does that mean they're going to spray?
Um, no, that's not, that's not what that means, but, um, I, this will be a topic with the Board of Health tomorrow, and they meet tomorrow, and I'll be at that meeting, so maybe I'll have something to follow up. And he is going to send something out as well, some kind of, uh, communication about it.
To you.
Yeah, well, yeah, it'll be on his website, on the mass dot website, and, and we'll, I'll forward it accordingly, so.
John, what was his name?
John Briggs.
Briggs.
He is our.
With the big scientific names.
Yes.
Yes.
Mosquito Control.
That guy, I remember.
Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District Director, John Briggs, and that's all I have.
Anybody have anything else to bring up?
Thank the Finance Committee for coming to the.
Thanks for coming.
Concom, in force.
It's always a pleasure.
Yeah, the three-town next week, potentially?
Ooh, yeah.
Well, I don't have it on my calendar, so I'll just go home and look at my minutes.
I put it on mine.
I know, you mentioned the other way, that's the only way I knew it.
The three-town meeting on September eleventh at six P.M. at.
How is it?
Nope.
I do have it on there.
Ah.
I was looking at this one.
And we were bouncing back and forth whether it was gonna be, and that was the ZBA.
ZBA.
Yeah.